Thank you for joining us this evening, regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council on March ninth, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salzetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader. Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Dwight Burford is going to lead the invocation and Councilman George Glover is going to lead in the pledge. If there are a bed, please stand.
Well, loving God, our Father, we thank you for the gift of this community, the peace we serve us and give us time to watch and to turn themselves with the lives we live here, the business. Pray for the travelers who pass through, for the little ones who go to school, those old and retired, and we thank you for the strength of this community. And thank you for this business that's conducted here, and we pray that you embrace and peace to those who deliberate, that they might come to see I die and work together for the furtherment. Thank you again.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Brandy?
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion passes seven zero. First item on the agenda is awards and presentations, and tonight we get to recognize Jack Witson. Jack, come on up.
As Park City turned forty, it's impossible not to talk about the history of the city without mentioning Jack Witson. Jack Witson has been involved with the city since he moved here in nineteen seventy. At that time, Park City was not actually a city. It was an improvement district. Jack was a member of the J.C.'s, and it was a J.C. project in combination with a great deal of work by the community at large that led to Park City becoming a city. Over the past forty years, Jack has been dedicated to the city. He has completed a variety of projects, and he served in many roles from volunteer to elected official and employee. Those roles include, and this isn't going to be an entire list, Jack, because there's forty years, right? So Chamber of Commerce, he still serves as the Executive Director. Convention and Tourism, he's still serving today on that committee. Mini Festival Committees, Planning and Zoning, Economic Development, Director of Public Works, and City Administrator. As an elected official, Jack was elected and served on the first city council from nineteen eighty-one through nineteen eighty-two, two-year terms, five-member council. Jack was elected as mayor. He was our second mayor for the city of Park City, and that was from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-nine. Once again, his service and dedication to Park City has been extensive. When he retired, the Wichita Eagle referred to him as Mr. Park City, and the Park City Post referred to him as the father of Park City. I'm happy to call him my friend and a great friend of Park City, Mr. Jack Witson.
I was telling the mayor that the sign's pretty long, but thank goodness my last name wasn't Schrader. We'd be out in the parking lot, you know, but I really thank the council for giving me this honor. It, it's just something that I wasn't expecting. Usually I'm on top of things and watching the meetings and agendas and stuff, but I totally missed this one, so. Thank you again. Thank you, Ray.
Could you both look up, please? Thank you.
So Jack, we said last, the last meeting when we decided on this, that if this sign disappears off the post, we know where to go looking for it.
Well, this will be in my, this will be in my house.
I know.
Thank you, Ray. Thank you. Keep up the good work, guys.
All right, and the next thing we have is some induction of, introduction of some new employees. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and as I always say, it's really exciting. It's exciting tonight because we see someone who served the city for forty years, and so we have some people who are just starting their career with the city. And we hope that they're going to be as, as great as what we just saw. Park City is a great community to serve. The first person that we want to introduce this evening is Donna Crombie. And Donna is coming to us. She's going to serve the city in the role of Senior Accountant. We always talk about how every position is very important to the city. The Finance Department, extremely important as we roll into our budget and we roll into our audit. Donna has formal training from Butler and WSU. She is a highly accomplished financial controller. She has over seventeen years of progressive experience in positions where she was performing high-level accounting functions. Her experience, it closely aligns with the responsibilities that we have as Senior Accountant, and so I would like to introduce Donna Crombie.
No, I was going to get up here and say anything, but I'm just really happy to be here. I've been two days in the office. Everybody has been great. There's a lot of work to do, but I'm just really excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Next, our Maintenance Department, very important. We have to maintain our city facilities and our vehicles. We're going to introduce two employees to you this evening, and they're both going to be in that Maintenance Department. What's exciting about this is that we have two people that are very strong. One is extremely strong facilities, and the other is very strong automotive. So the first employee is Hunter Genic. Hunter comes to us with strong training and experience in the area of vehicle and equipment maintenance. His formal training includes an associate degree from Wichita Area Technical College, where he studied automotive technology and welding. He has extensive experience in vehicle equipment repair and fleet maintenance, which includes his most recent position as the Head Diesel Mechanic for McGill Truck Lines right here in Park City. So we're excited to bring him even closer into our vest. We're excited to have him come work for the city of Park City. Hunter.
Howdy, I'm real excited to get started tomorrow, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work here with everybody, and I'm thinking this will be a great relationship.
Awesome. Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Okay, so you see, that's our, our strong person in our Diesel and Mechanic for Vehicles. Very important, so I think you can guess that our next person comes to us with a background that is extremely strong and extensive in facilities maintenance. He also has public service underneath his belt. He has served for school districts, municipal governments, which include the city of Lenexa, and his last position with the city of Wichita. He also has a degree. We are very happy to bring him to the best city at this point, the city of Park City, Andrew Phillips.
Thank you for having me here. I actually graduated from Heights, not too far from here, and grew up in this area. It's been really great to see how Park City has grown and changed over time, and I'm very excited to be a part of it moving forward here, so thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. That was the last thing underneath awards and presentations, and we'll move on to public forum. Karen Spurlock.
I'm back over the camper issue in the driveway, the parking of the camper, and he's now living in that camper pretty much on a regular basis.
I, I just want to say one thing. I just want you to know, because the last time when you talked, these are recorded and televised, and so people can watch this. So that's just what I want to let you know, because some of the stuff you said last time, you mentioned that you wanted to keep it confidential. I just want you to know that people do see this, the public does, and, and the person you talk about may as well.
Okay. Well, I just feel like, and then maybe they will find out, maybe they'll know, but at the same token, I think that we have to stand up for our rights. And I feel like my rights get violated because I have, you know, sense of security is gone. I feel like I have somebody, an unwanted guest in my bedroom on any given night. And the reason I say that is because when he's walking through the trailer and stuff, I can hear all that, you know, and he's hooked up a water hose. He's got a disposal thing that you can hook up to the sewer so he can dump his waste, and he rolls it in the house and dumps it down the toilet. When he's done with that, he rinses that and runs it down the driveway. And I'm just thinking that, you know, we're trying to come out of a pandemic here, and all I see is cooties, you know. And I've lived in Park City for five years. I'm really proud of watching it grow, and I feel like I'm a part of the community, even though I'm a renter. I'm looking at buying this home, but when I look on both sides of me, today I'm out working in the yard, trying to get new grass to grow, trying to plant flowers. This side I have a boat, a camper, a truck full of garbage, and on this side I have a camper, a pop-up tent, and a trampoline, and assorted garbage. So one side I'm on the side of a campground, and the other side I live in the middle of a junkyard. And I just feel like, is that really the impression that we want Park City to have? Where when you can drive through, this side of town looks real nice, but you come over here to the older town, you look around, and the first thing you say is, there's trouble here. Must be a bunch of drug addicts to be so careless with their life and their lifestyles, and that's what it looks like, and that's the image that gets projected. I just think as a community, we gotta clean this up. I mean, look at the stuff that leaks out of all these vehicles. I mean, there's gas, there's transmission, there's oil. That's going into our water table sooner or later. There's a creek back there. I come from Wisconsin. No way would you have that type of garbage sitting by a waterway. You would just, the fines would be unreal, and that's because they're looking at down the road where all that stuff is going. Right now, it's just sitting there rotten and looking ugly. Further down the road, there'll be people getting cancer and every other thing because of stuff leaked into the ground table. And I just think we really got to do something about it. We got to put our foot down, and we got to make rules that we stand by. So that's how I feel about that camper. It's got to go. The guy is living in it. Just drive by it. You see it all hooked up. That's really all I got to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was the only thing we have for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports, and we'll hear from our City Administrator Sean Fox.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have several items to update you on this evening. First, as was passed earlier, we had two separate water main breaks today. One was behind Family Dollar near Sixty-first and Hydralic. That affected primarily the strip center. And then the second one was in front of Chisholm State Bank at Sixty-first and Broadway. Both of the repairs have been taken care of and fixed, but it does bring delight to some of the issues that we're having with relocating our water lines for the intersection project at Sixty-first and Broadway. In that area, as many of us are aware, our records or documentation of the as-built are scarce. And as such, MEEs Construction has been having a difficult time locating lines where we thought they were, where they're actually are located. I'm only bringing this up for your information at this time, as we have and will have change orders that are coming down the way that I'll need to authorize, and then fill in with council after the fact for the time and resources spent and allocated to making those improvements. The MEEs contract was originally underbudgeted, what was originally allocated for utility relocates, but with the change orders, most likely we will exceed our budgeted amount for utility relocates. Just letting council know. Number two, the Crosswing Casino, I think everyone knows, is open. Traffic proved to be very challenging the first night and into the second day, but since then it's somewhat calmed down. They are building a new overflow parking lot on the north side of Wild West Drive, and that should be completed within the next week and should help. Staff met with the owners and the operators yesterday, and we're working on memorandums of understanding for both law enforcement and general municipal services, and we expect to bring that to the council at the next meeting on March twenty-third. Which leads me into the next topic, which is an update on our code related to recreational vehicles that we just heard on. We had planned on revisiting that on March twenty-second as well, but there, due to some time, one of the tasks asked from council was to research not only this county, but more so the region, to get a better grasp on what other communities and how they're handling it, and so we are working on that. If at all possible, we will bring that back on, on the twenty-third as well, but it may take us until the first meeting in April to get that accomplished. The new Sixty-Ninth Street water line is operational, and the former Rural Water District number two customers have all been transferred, transferred over. Admittedly, we could have done a better job informing those residents and those businesses ahead of time that we were going to have a change in providers, but we are working with that and learning as we go. This morning, staff met with Wilson and Company regarding the new proposed lift station at Fifty-third Street. It is good to report that we have secured the necessary easement and dedication for both the sewer line and the lift station from the property owner. Wilson and Company will be gathering information here over the next couple of weeks to determine the most efficient design, as well as the best connection point into our overall sewer system. But we expect to see construction begin within the next couple of months, and then it should be completed by September first. Which leads me into just the last topic, which is an overall update around the city. Everybody keeps talking about, there's a lot of things going on. Yes, there is. The new Quick Shop began construction last week in Echo Hills, and weather permitting, it's planned to be opened and operational within ninety days. Amazon, Amazon is still going like gangbusters and plans to be somewhat operational, a portion of the facility, by July. Ditch Witch is adding a new maintenance building on their property currently. The architects for O'Reilly should be submitting their final plans within the next couple of weeks. The Seventy-seventh Street project is looking for an April bid letting, and then the Sixty-first Street project is looking more towards July for the bid letting. So a lot of things going on in the city right now.
Thank you, Sean. Does anybody have any questions for Sean?
Just real quick, could you also provide an update as far as what you know on Pratt Industries? Looks like they're trying to move stuff there now.
Pratt Industries, which is about a half mile south of here on Hydralic, they too are right now preparing the ground for construction. They would like to be somewhat operational. That's why there's a rush on the sewer line to, to get the new lift station in place. They would like to be able to connect their infrastructure in September time period, so.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Sean. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Brandy?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Ben? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to new business, item four, which is discuss and consider Park City's used baseball financial report. Scott?
Thank you, and congratulations to Jack. He, he's one was the integral part of getting me involved in this. I'm, I should thank you, but I'm graduating for his, for his honor, so. Tonight I'll have the final national report complete. Once I get it done, I'll send it to you. It's not something I want to hurry up and get done for 2020. Our baseball softball, we canceled. There was no play out there in 2020 for COVID. Update on it, I mean, we stopped the mo, we stopped the weedy, we stopped it all that. The fields look great, and we're looking forward to a better season this year. So that's really all I got.
Got any, when are you doing sign-ups, or do you have anything?
Times are going right now, but they're slow.
Okay.
Very slow. As a league, we play in what's called the Heights League, and there's seven, seven towns in that, Andover, Valley Center, Whitewater, Circle, El Dorado, Bel Air, and us. And we just extended it last week because the signings just aren't strong. There's still a, there's still a carryover from COVID, what, are they going to play or are they not going to play, that kind of thing. Everything looks good as far as COVID is concerned with baseball this year, but we did cancel it. Valley Center, for instance, has a school grounds that they practice on and play on. The school system owns them, so they canceled that pretty early, so.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Scott?
We had talked about doing upgrades this year on the fields. I'm just curious on the status of that, or, I don't know if Scott may know that, or?
I don't, John.
Has there been, has anybody reached out to you or talked to you?
Zach did. He called me, but I just wanted to hold off. I just said, hey, I'm, I want to be part of that, you know, financially, but I wanted to see what happens, where we're at, and get back on track here.
All right. Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
That brings us to item five, which is discuss and consider a resolution issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for store more space, one thirty-five project.
Mayor and Council, this is a relatively simple IRB. It, it involves the issuance of two-point-six, potentially up to two-point-six million dollars for the acquisition and construction and equipping of a commercial facility for storage units along I-135 near Harper Camperland. The applicant in this case is issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds, which do not involve any sort of ad valorem tax abatements. There's no request for that. The purpose of this that benefits the applicant is that they would receive a, an exemption from sales tax on all of the purchases that they make of materials that they use in connection with the construction and equipping of the facility. I think some representative is here if you have questions, but I would recommend that you adopt Resolution ten sixty-three, twenty twenty-one.
Does anybody have any questions for Doug? Brandy?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution ten sixty-three dash twenty twenty-one determining the visibility of issuing taxable industrial revenue bonds for the purpose of financing the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a commercial facility to be located in said city and authorizing execution and related documents.
George?
Now, second the motion.
There's a motion and a second. Not seeing any discussion. Marlo, would you call the roll?
John Lynn here.
Aye.
George Glover.
Aye.
Ben Salzetta.
Aye.
Melvin Kerr.
Aye.
Tom Jones.
Aye.
George Capps.
Aye.
Brandy Bailey.
Aye.
Jim Schrader.
And that resolution passes seven zero. Thank you, Doug. That brings us to item six, which is discuss and consider approval of the supplemental agreement with professional engineering consultants, PEC, for the water line adjustments to the Seventy-seventh and Broadway project. Sean?
Yes, sir. In support of the Seventy-seventh Street and Broadway intersection project, certain water line improvements need to be completed prior to the actual construction of the intersection itself. Those improvements include removal of a T connection and two existing valves from their current location and relocating them outside the proposed intersection, as well as vertically adjusting an existing water line to, to clear a proposed drainage culvert box. The estimated cost of construction for relocating the valves once the project begins and adjusting the water lines is approximately forty-six thousand dollars, which would be included in this project. So this is only for the design portion of it. That was not included in PEC's original contract. Like I said, the actual construction will take place once the intersection is closed, and it's being done at that time period. Staff recommends approval and authorizing the mayor to execute the contract with PEC in the amount of three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
No, I was gonna make a motion that we, or move that we approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with PEC for the amount not to exceed thirty-seven fifty to be paid out of the capital project fund.
Ben?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item seven, which is discuss and consider approval of a bid from MEEs Construction for infrastructure improvements for Ironstone Village and High Ridge Second Edition. Sean?
Ironstone Village Edition Phase One consists of twenty-eight homes located on the south of Sixty-ninth on the west side of Hillside. The developer Elite USA Construction presented petitions for paving, stormwater, drainage, sanitary sewer, and water for Ironstone Village, and certain lots of High Ridge Second Edition in August of last year, and it was approved by the council. A bid opening was conducted last week on March second with a total of seven companies submitting bids. MEEs Construction submitted the lowest combined bid of six hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars, which is below the engineer's estimate of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars. And I haven't broken out there as far as individual cost for paving, stormwater, drainage, sanitary sewer, water, and a total. It is budgeted, and staff recommends approval of the bid tabulation, and again, authorizing the mayor to finalize and execute a contract.
This was a contract you passed out, Marlo?
Yes, this is.
Okay. Ben?
I move to approve a bid, the bid tabulation, authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with MEEs Construction in the amount not to exceed six hundred and fifty-two thousand five hundred dollars to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
George? Now, second the motion.
Tom, did you have a question?
I was going to say.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that motion passes seven zero. That brings us to item eight, which is discuss and consider approval of design and construction engineering contracts for paving and water for Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six. Sean?
And this is the last one for me tonight. Prairie Hills Edition Phase Six is located just south of the City Administration Center on the east side of Hydralic. The developer SBA Construction presented petitions for paving and water improvements last month. They were approved by the council, subject to receiving the required letter of credit. Attached are the associated contracts for K.E. Miller Engineering PEA for the design and construction engineering. The amounts are seven thousand five hundred dollars for paving and thirty-six hundred dollars for water. And again, it is authorized, funded via temporary financing, followed by the issuance of GEO. And again, it is authorized funded via temporary financing followed by the issuance of GO bonds.
Does anybody have any questions for John or Sean? Ben?
I had to go ahead and move to authorize, approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute contracts with K.E. Miller Engineering PEA in an amount not to exceed $11,100 to be paid out of the capital projects fund.
And Brandy?
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tom?
I'll be abstaining on this.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussions. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And abstain. And that motion passes six zero one. That brings us to item nine, which is discuss and consider approving the replacement of cable barrier fence at Hat McLean Park. Simon?
Mayor and council, excuse me. So I'm here to discuss the replacement of the current cable barrier fence at Hat McLean Park with a living fence. So during the February 1st, 2021 Parks Committee meeting, I brought three different options to replace the existing cable barrier fence, which is on the north side as you go around is about 1,000 linear feet worth of fence. The three options that are presented were one, where we replace the same, the fence in the same similar fashion instead of using railroad ties, we use posts, run the wire through it. It's almost identical to what it is except for metal posts. The other option would be set metal posts and then weld sucker rod between the posts and create a fence that way. The third option is to create a living fence with trees. So when you compare all three options, they, they all come out about the same dollar amount, maybe actually a little bit more expensive of the two metal fence options. But the, the recommendation from the Parks Committee is to, is to replace that fence with a living fence of trees. So do you guys have any questions?
Brandy?
When you say they come out as the, approximately the same dollar amount, it looks like they're, the other two are way less. So how do they come out?
They are.
Close to be the same.
They do not include the installation on the first two options. We didn't really pursue gathering estimates on those options because the Parks Committee voted to do the living fence, but to do the metal fence options, you're looking at about $11 a foot if, which tall fence does the work, which would be additional approximately $11,000, I guess. So to do the first two options, so it's actually cheaper to do the living fence.
So that $11,000 a foot is, is still, $11 a foot is the same price for the first and second option installations?
Yeah, it'd be real close to the same.
Yeah. Tom?
Spacing on it, would it be a closed living fence?
It would not be closed. It still have openings, but the, the goal is to make the opening small enough to where vehicular traffic is not going into there.
The reason I was asking is security. When you start fencing stuff off like that in a park, then there's blind spots, so.
So the, the living fence, a lot of, a lot of municipalities are turning to the living fence because the parks are supposed to be more natural, right? So you create a living fence, a barrier of trees, if you will, bushes, shrubs, whatever you want to put up there, but it just creates a more vibrant, natural environment that people tend to enjoy. You know, once these trees grow up, it creates areas where people can hammock off of them and it, it opens up a lot of other opportunities for park use.
Ben?
So in the discussion that was had with the park board of that February 1st meeting, just going through all the different options really, and several months back, Bruce had brought in an arborist from the state of Kansas and that was very helpful and insightful as far as what's going on with our forestry or, or with our tree situation with just our, our nature part of it. And the, the need that Park City has going forward is moving to replacing a lot of what we have as aging and older trees and such in our community. So how can you in, how can you include that throughout? One way is something like this and the park board felt strongly that this was a great option that was presented by Simon and by Bruce with the options that are there when it comes to the ability to maintain versus the repair costs that do considerably or do come consistently on the fencing as it is, or even if it was replaced with the two options that were presented, you're still going to have a great amount of, or a good amount of, of repair work that's going to come and it's going to come at a more expensive cost generally when you put in man hours and such. So park board was very supportive of this idea that was brought forward. And so with that there, and I, I was, I love the idea that they have, so I'd make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to finalize and execute a contract with Hillside Nursery for Trees at Hat McLean Park in the amount not to exceed $11,001.60 with a cost split of $7,000 to be paid with respect, from the Special Alcohol Parks and Recreation Fund and $4,000.60 to be paid from General Fund Parks Department.
Melvin?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any more discussion? George?
Just what, what location is this barrier?
So when you drive into the Hat McLean Park off of Hydralic Drive, you go past the old swimming pool and you have that parking area on the right side. You go past that, that's that barrier that goes all the way around on the road as you go out through, through the north end of that park as you circle around. It's on the right-hand side. Across the road from it's the baseball fields.
It's still not clear in my mind.
It's adjacent to the tennis courts and the pavilions.
Okay.
So when you're taking that exit to go out the backside of the park, that stretch that you're going down.
Okay.
So these trees will run north-south?
Well, kind of, they'll run north-south, but they, they turn, so they go east-west and then they'll turn and go to the north.
Does that help you, George?
Well, I'm confused, but.
No, it's just, you go through the park and then you head over by where the concession stand is for the bathrooms on that other side of the main park.
I guess I just don't understand replacing a barrier with trees.
Okay.
It's not logical to me, but that's okay. It's not a barrier no more.
Gotcha. All right. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes six one. And that brings us to item 10, which is discuss and consider the purchase of Vermeer MC500 vacuum excavation trailer.
So during the budget discussions for the 2021 calendar year, there was a allocation of approximately $155,000 to the utility fund water department for the purchase of a backhoe and another $30,000 allocated to the utility fund sewer department to purchase a sewer flushing machine. So my proposal tonight is to actually purchase a vacuum excavation trailer that will flush sewer lines as well. This will greatly increase our response times because we don't necessarily have to wait on one call locates because we're not doing any digging that will cause any harm to any underground utilities. We'll still go through the 811 process, but this will be a way for us to excavate and pothole and, and do exploratory stuff in our ground that, that won't affect fiber optics or anything of that nature. This will also save us approximately $48,000 a year that we're paying the mayor to flush sewer lines on an annual basis. So I've gathered estimates from a few different manufacturers or researched a few different manufacturers on excavation machines and this machine in particular is the only machine that I've found that put out 15 PSI for flushing, which is considerably more than all the rest of the manufacturers. We used the Sourcewell Public Utility Contract to base the quote from, since the Vermeer dealers are all pretty much the same in the multi-state area to gather this quote. So any questions?
Can, can you talk about how maybe this would have helped us a few weeks ago if we would have had it with that sewer?
So what, what ended up happening with that sewer line was, of course, it was freezing cold outside. This, this machine would have been inside during that time period, but on Friday when it, the temperatures finally did warm up to the, or Thursday, I think it was, when the temperatures finally warmed up above freezing, the contractor actually brought in a truck that is a hydro excavator, just like what we're proposing purchasing here. This is a trailer versus a truck, but they brought the truck out and once he hydro excavated that area because of the, the tight nature of all those underground utilities in that area, we really found out quick what was going on. So it really expedited that process. If we could have done that on Monday when it was negative 15 degrees outside, it would have been fixed very fast, but we just didn't know what was underground. So we did a lot of exploration to try to find that with a backhoe or excavator where we could have done it really quick with a hydro excavator.
Cause that'll really, that'll jet it all out and then you can suck it out and you just have a really good view of what's going on.
You're using a pressure washer wand, kind of like your car wash, maybe a little bit more pressure, but, and then you're using a giant vacuum and it's sucking into a holding tank. We've cleaned out the drying beds at the old plants. We'll be able to take up material there, dry it out and, and get rid of it. But we could use it on our lift stations to clean out lift stations. We could use it on our storm drains just to clean those out. We could use this thing for all kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I think this would be a great asset to us as we look at kind of what's been going on in the city lately. The one thing I'd just remind council that we need to look at is probably beefing up a little bit on the Public Works Department and get some equipment like this that's nice and get some more boots on the ground where we don't have to call or wait for dispatch to get somebody out here and we can take care of things ourselves. So I think this would be an awesome purchase for us. And when you were looking at saving $48,000 a year for jetting the sewer that we're already spending, I mean, we can pay for this within just over two years, so. Tom?
I have a question. Is this going to look like some of that equipment that's sitting over on 53rd Street at that rental that they've got the big vac pump that are on trailers? Trying to get in my mind what this is going to look like.
Trying to think what's down there if I've seen it. So up, up there at the Ditch Witch facility, they actually have some hydro excavation trailers up there. And the reason I, I would have preferred to go with Ditch Witch, but the reason that I didn't was because they only put out about four PSI on the flushing side. So that was kind of an issue for me. The, but they, they do have some of those trailers that are similar to that up there on, at the Ditch Witch facility if you're in town. This is a little bit of a bigger machine. It also heats the water for flushing and to get rid of those fat deposits inside those sewer lines. So it's a little bit, a little bit different, but, but overall kind of similar, I guess.
But this is something we will definitely use. We have Manpower's going to use it.
We will. So I have one vacancy right now within the utilities department and we're looking at filling that here pretty quick. And my, my goal is to actually get this piece of machinery in and have that one person, this is his machine to use. So we're flushing lines and we're doing everything we need to be doing.
Melvin?
I'll make a motion that we approve the mayor to execute the contract with Vermeer Great Plains to purchase a Vermeer MC500 Vactron vacuum excavation system in amount of not to exceed $103,423, or $23 with the cost split from the, split of $73,423 to be paid from the utility fund water department and $30,000 to be paid from the utility fund sewer department.
George Capps?
Well, I'd second that, but I do have a question. How many men does it take to operate this?
It'll be a one-man operation.
One-man operation?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Simon. That was the last item on the agenda, so we'll move to governing body reports and we'll start with George Glover.
Yeah, I'd like to encourage everybody to get out, enjoy the warm weather we've been having. I know it's been a long winter. I do believe with this COVID thing, I think we're seeing some light at the end of the tunnel here with some of the dropping positive rates and vaccines availability. I know with the problems that we're going to see with some of these bills, if there's someone out there that needs to, needs help with their gas or electric bill, you can still apply for LEAP, which is Low Income Energy Assistance Program. You can go to Department for Children and Families and apply for that. There's going to probably be a lot of need for that once we start getting our, our gas bill. So the, the option is there and again, it's based on income criteria. And that's all I have.
Melvin?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
Don't have anything.
John?
The only thing I had was, I had someone mention to me the water tower up at 85th Street. It's really dark up there. Is there supposed to be, I know we've talked about it before, we didn't put a big light on it, but is there supposed to be some sort of a light shining on that at all?
We, we never did do lighting because of the cost involved with it, so we never did light that up.
There's nothing at all even like a street light or something up there?
No. You're talking about just reflecting up.
Yeah, I mean, I remember we had to talk about it because it was expensive, but I just thought there was something. Anyway, I just had a citizen ask me about it.
George?
I only got one thing and it, it really concerns me. I was watching the news today and I found out that on eBay you cannot buy Dr. Seuss no more. They, they took him off, but you can buy The Communist Manifesto by Karl Marx and you can buy Mein Kampf from Adolf Hitler. And I think we really need to pull our heads out of the sand and watch what's going on in this nation of ours, because I love our liberty.
Yeah. You got, when you start paying attention to what's going on, you wonder if there's any common sense left.
Yeah, really.
Maybe you can buy that book.
Ben?
George, maybe you should check and see if you can buy Common Sense by Thomas Paine. They're on eBay right now, because it's in short supply. One reminder, this Saturday, Sunday is time change, so just a reminder, set your clocks forward this Saturday. I joke at church, but I, this is really what I do. Like Saturday afternoon, I move my clocks forward then and I live the rest of the day with new time change. So when I go to bed, I'm not going to bed an hour late and it makes a world of difference. But that's coming up and then just kind of what has been said here, it's exciting just to see where, where we're moving forward. Thank you to the staff for all the work that they are doing here as well.
Brandy?
Like Sean said, with all the growth and activity that we see going around the city, I drive around the city quite a bit, just looking at what's going on and we need to really seriously, we've talked about it, but we need to start taking action and become a little bit more serious about the design standards that we have. As we drive down Hydralic, some of the newer additions that are going up, I absolutely hate what's happening along the, in some of the additions. And if we have some design standards, then maybe that wouldn't have happened, but with everything changing and coming into town, if we need, if we don't do anything or we don't have any standards, we're going to look, we're going to look silly. We're going to have, you know, a blue building over here, we're going to have a 12-foot fence over here. I mean, we, we just really need to take it serious and start looking into this. That's all I have.
Ben?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes seven zero. Break?